Back to order. We are down to approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton.
Well, we have quite a few approval of minutes for April 9th regular session, the April 14th superintendent search, the April 15th, 16th, and 17th candidate interviews and warrants, G 14, 14, excuse me, G 413, G 414, R 218, 219, and 220, L 39, L 40. Payroll for April 9th, April 23rd, and May 7th, circuit breaker 10 and 11, warrants for sped 20, 21, 22, 23, and food service 15, 16, and 17.
Okay, in order to make this easy, I think I'll just kind of mention them and then the person will say, "I make the motion." Okay, so we don't have to repeat all of these. The approval of the minutes for the April 9th regular session and G 413, 14, R 218, 219, 220, and L 39 and L 40. We'll do those first. Yeah, Mrs. Bonnich. Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? That should be unanimous. Okay, get those. Approval of the minutes of April 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th would be... Mrs. Bonnich.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Four in favor, two abstain. Linda, Mrs. Kane, and Mrs. Carroll. Those are candidate interviews. Okay, now we go down to the payroll warrant of 49, 423, 57. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Broussard. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, Linda, and abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay. Marrants, circuit breaker 10 and 11. All those in favor? Oh, no, sorry.
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Carroll, second, Mrs. Broussard. All those in favor? Five in favor, abstain, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. Okay, and we're on the last one. Food service warrants, FS 15, 16, and 17. Mrs. Bonnich.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Five in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. Thank you.
Good job.
I don't know if you did the...
Oh, sped. I left out sped, sorry. Ah, sorry. Next time I'll give a hundred percent. All those in sped warrants, approval of sped 20, 21, 22, 23. Mrs. Carroll.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Five, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. We did it. Thank you. All right, great. Our student representative report, we had put out of order because she's trying out at open mic night tonight, so we've got our fingers crossed that Jessica does very well tonight. Don't doubt that she will. The superintendents' report.
Good evening, everyone. There are four items on the report. The first is a personnel report. The second, I'm pleased to invite Sandra Curtin and Bill Robert from WCTV up to the table to give a report on what they will be providing to our new high school.
Welcome, please join us.
Thank you. I brought the appropriate water with me today.
Free advertising.
We call it Poland Screen.
Well, thank you for inviting Bill Robert and me here to represent WCTV. WCTV is a town resource whose mission is to train residents of all ages and people who work in Wilmington in the art of video production. WCTV's goal is keeping you in touch with your community. We are happy to have this opportunity to tell you about WCTV's newest venture. Earlier this year, WCTV's board voted to commit a budget of $125,000 to furnish television equipment and manpower to purchase and install the necessary equipment for the new high school to be on the cutting edge of video production in the new control room and elsewhere in the high school. The equipment will include cameras, recorders, and monitors, as well as high-end components such as video switchers and audio mixers. Then, we approached Superintendent Benton and members of the Wilmington School Department to discuss the technical capabilities of the new high school and the possibility of WCTV's participation in this project. Given the approval, we went ahead, and since then, we've been working with the school department, Joanne Benton, and John Richardson of Doran Whittier Architects Incorporated, and his team to develop a top-notch video production facility. The money that will benefit the Wilmington community, too. Much of the budget will be used to put together a fully functional television production facility at the high school. We will be installing production equipment in the proposed media room and in the adjacent control room. Another benefit is students can learn the skills necessary to become camera operators, audio technicians, and directors, as well as on-air talent. The town will be able to view more Wilmington High School educational and sports programming on WCTV. The students will learn about and be prepared to follow a career or an avocation in video and production, and the high school will have top-of-the-line video and production equipment available to them in their own building. To expedite these goals, this year's high school budget also includes funding for a person to work with the students on-site and maintain the equipment and the use of the room for the students. We will also be outfitting the gym and the auditorium with remotely-controlled cameras to help to facilitate the recording of school events, theater, and music, and sporting events. With each of these setups, there is the option of either getting everything on tape or going direct to air on our educational channel with live programming. We have a number of reasons for going ahead with this project. First of all, it is our understanding that the school committee will be holding its regular meetings in this new media room. Having this system in place will help to facilitate our live coverage of this panel's meetings, much like the permanent setup we put in the town hall, Room 9, back in 2012, to do their meetings of the selectmen. The added cameras will also make it easier for us to bring you events, like the annual town meeting. In order to have student resources working in and for the high school, WCTV has an educational hierarchy of training for students of almost all ages. We're not including children under the fourth grade level. To begin with, for the first several years, WCTV worked with grades four and five at the North and West Intermediate Schools. Our youth outreach trainers would lug heavy equipment to the school and have the students imagine they were in a studio atmosphere. This plan was not as workable as we had hoped. But beginning last year, with Joanne Benton's assistance and blessing, vans now pick up the students and bring them to WCTV to use the classroom, studio, and control room for real experience with real professional equipment. The vans, which Joanne Benton has earmarked for transporting students to WCTV, have made the entire production process possible. Now with the use of the vans, students are brought to the studio and are able, as part of their training, to have hands-on experience in a real studio situation. What a difference that's made. In the case of the high school students, they crew for the in-the-loop programs hosted by Kate Burnham. There is real joy and excitement when the students are in the studio, and I think Joanne and Peggy had, although Kate sees them all the time, but Joanne and Peggy had an opportunity to see that enthusiasm and excitement of the students. Actually, the staff also looks forward to the days when the kids are here. Normally, we have a fairly quiet day unless we have a show, but when the kids are here, there's like all excitement and everybody's, you know, it's infectious, it really is. Now we'll have kids training at the studio Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. This year extended our original video education program to include a group of interested high school students and called the new program Project 231, because they meet with us at 2:31.
We couldn't just call it the Video Club. It's like Steve Martin's joke about, "Well, you wouldn't want to put your money in Fred's bank." Video club seemed a little pedestrian, so we wanted to spice it up a little bit.
So it made a little mysterious. These students have had the opportunity for training in an exciting professional atmosphere. The high school students from this year and subsequent years will be the beginning of a long line of students trained at WCTV on the identical equipment that will be available for their use in Wilmington High School's control room. Subsequently, we will have trained volunteers, ready to man or to woman, the high school control room, and use the new equipment without the need for a second complete training in a different facility. Our newest group of students will be students from the middle school. They will also be taking advantage of the school vans and brought to WCTV. So beginning in October, students from each of the levels, the intermediate, the middle, and the high school, will be transported to WCTV by van one day a week for the entire school year. Again, thank you, Joanne Benton, to make that all possible. WCTV is proud to say that we have used some of our funding to directly benefit our town and our students in the area of video production. WCTV is grateful for the support of the superintendent and the principals of the North and the West, Dennis Shaw and Hope Doran. And Dennis was just here at the studio today for his students' last class with us, and he's so excited about it and looking forward to next year's group as well. Thank you very much. We really appreciate this opportunity to tell you a little bit about what WCTV is doing and the monies that we're giving to the schools. Bill?
Okay. Boy, one of the nice things about having the new studio, as we mentioned, it'll be pretty much a duplicate of what we have now. As far as timetables and things like that, it's a little early yet, obviously. The high school is still coming together. Not to mention the fact that when you're dealing with technology these days, things change very quickly. So as I like to tell people, my job is part technician, part fortune teller. So at this point, we've got a plan in place that may change, but obviously, the budget figure, which is the most important, will not be changing, and this is something we're going to do, an investment in the future of Wilmington, the future of the people in it, because it is an important thing. A lot of schools have TV stations. In our case, you know, we have two of our former, I guess we'd call them former members, Chris Cassidy being one, Sean Neville being the other. Chris now writes for the Herald. He was an intern that started at WCTV long before I got there. He was, what, 10?
He started at 10.
Sean Neville wasn't too much older, and now he's actually, I think he's actually the assignment editor at WMUR-TV up in Manchester. So...
And also, excuse me.
Yes.
Also, our youth training person, Kaylee Bernado, went through our whole system and was a very active member at WCTV, and we've had several people like Meg Ryan return and...
Steve Valenti.
And Steve Valenti and Sean. I mean, all our interns were all, have worked through the system of WCTV, so it's very exciting.
Sometimes, you know, when kids are in high school, they're not sure what they want to do as they move forward in their lives. This is a chance to expose them to something, you know, media production. A lot of people catch the bug and they just go with it. And, you know, we mentioned Chris, we mentioned Sean. Now, I didn't grow up in Wilmington, but we had a TV studio where I went to high school in Methuen, and I started out there and wound up catching the bug, as it were, in my sophomore year, and this is my 25th year working in media professionally. A lot of it in commercial broadcasts, radio, and TV, and almost nine years here. So it definitely is something where if people get the interest, it can give them experience and something to move forward as they look to apply these skills in a professional arena.
Can sure become a career for certain.
Right. If it becomes a career for them or just an avocation, it's fine, but they've just had experience with a different aspect of life which they may not have been otherwise exposed to yet.
Does anyone have any questions?
I think they've all been on TV beyond the school committee meeting with us as well. They've been interviewed by Dawn recently with the elections.
Oh, yes.
And one of the nice things, too, for, instance, Kate, when the studio is in place over there, you could probably even do in-the-loop over there as well as at our studio.
That would be awesome. Mrs. Carroll?
I just want to say thank you for all of your support. It's going to be great. The kids are going to love it, and I can't wait to see our productions.
Neither can I.
Mrs. Benton?
I just wanted to say, for those of you who don't know, Sandra and I have something in common because we're both retiring this year, but I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Wilmington Public Schools for all that you've done for us in the time that I've been here, and just really, really appreciate the incredible support, so thank you.
Oh, Joanne, this mess.
And wish you all the best.
Oh, thank you, and you as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Curtin's retirement came up and caught us like with a shock. I think I just heard about it last week.
Oh, really?
I didn't, it was well-kept secret, and we're certainly going to miss you.
Oh, thank you.
But you've brought this, the whole production process such a long way, you and your group that's there now, and I know it's all based on what people have done in the past, but to really build upon that and to see a need in the high school and go forward with it and know exactly what we need, money. But the programming that's done, my grandson took part in the, from the north, and I want to tell other people who have their Saturday morning sessions they had in the fall, was so exciting. He was so excited, and he's going to go forward with it next year, I'm sure. But they have things available that your kids would never have the opportunity. Where would you ever get that opportunity?
Yeah, yeah. And now we have the summer classes running as well, so there's, they're going to be two in each of the levels. So, yeah, so we don't stop.
Why did you decide in that, on that level? I'm wondering if that's what I'm thinking.
What do you mean?
To start with the fourth and fifth graders.
We started with them because they were more available. Their teachers were more interested in us doing it, and some of their teachers were more active with WCTV and giving us programming. So we started there. We didn't start below that level because we figured the kids couldn't carry the cameras. Now the cameras are a lot lighter, but they're still a little too young to be responsible.
What I've seen this year, and probably because you have fourth and fifth graders, some other people here have fourth and fifth graders, what I have seen is the fact that all of a sudden, the world wakes up for them, and they are so excited. I know Dr. Quick's, "Goodbye, Dr. Quick, no longer with us," but, I mean, her daughter and my grandson, I can't even explain to you how they get along doing this kind of activities, these activities, and they're so excited to see something new. They're not afraid to make mistakes, and they're happy to work on these things. Very exciting for them.
Well, it's become more popular as well with YouTube and all the different videos that people are showing, that you want to be part of it. And what is the small camera there? The people have the...
The phone?
The camera phones.
Yeah, I mean, nowadays, we talk about, you know, the equipment, things like that, you know, most people now have a high-def video studio in their pocket.
True.
But you're talking about the flip cameras, I believe.
And the flip cameras as well, yes. So there's so much availability for them to do that, that to actually get a step above that is very exciting.
Very exciting.
Well, that's the thing, anyone can grab a block of clay. It takes someone with skill and effort and time and patience to make it into something that would be palatable as a sculpture.
Exactly. And I'd like to take this opportunity while we are all here for, to say that Dr. Burnham's in-the-loop is really a wonderful program. And the people who are there are so interesting, and you have the, you had the nicest way this past time that I saw. You always have, but in talking with those students, you have the nicest way of bringing it out to them and out the things that they were involved in, and so that they weren't shy on the cam, the two little girls were not shy on the camera. I thought that was really fascinating.
I had a pre-meet with them to prep, as I do with any show that I do. I didn't have to prep very much. They came with their own questions.
They were great.
And they came with props.
It was the Kers program, this last one that we saw.
I think that this was probably my favorite. I really enjoy talking with the kids.
And I got to watch Bill with the kids in the back room, and it was amazing just to watch him giving directions to seven different students, and they all knew what they were doing, and I don't know how many cameras, but it really, if you ever get a chance to go down and watch...
I would love to.
A little ADD goes a long way.
It pays off. It pays off. Thank you.
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate your coming and telling us about this. It's really something that needs to be told to the town, and we are extremely grateful for you for doing this.
Thank you.
And we hope you have a happy retirement.
Thank you. We'll talk.
Absolutely. Thank you. Bye. I can see you and Mr. Curtin in your little coupe, running down the road.
Oh. The Chris died.
Oh, no. Well, I won't put that vision in my mind.
Actually, Paul gave it to a student who does automotive work, so he's having fun working on that.
Oh, that's great.
Bill, any score?
One dozen Montreal.
Oh, dear. That's all right, it'll make them want it more.
Okay, the rest of my report, the next thing is the park testing. In your folders is a report from Kate Burnham and Neil Ellis on the pilot field testing that we did this year. As luck would have it, I participated in a webinar today that I sent out to all of you on information to help districts choose MCAS or park in the spring. And Kate is actually going to the MAS drive-in on this topic on Monday, so I am recommending that we invite Mary Delai to the June 11th meeting, and Neil, and we discuss what Wilmington wants to do. It was interesting, and you won't get the flavor as much from a hard copy, but when they were talking about all the positives, they really buried, I mean, there were lots of technical issues everywhere in the state, and they sort of buried it in their report. And it would have been interesting to, and that's what Kate will hear on Monday, a panel of, the superintendent from Riviera and from Burlington in the technical department talking about what the issues were this year, so they really need to...
I'm going to wait for that meeting to really kind of get my questions together, but I wanted to ask you, with the, being aware of the technical difficulties, especially with the programs that they administer, how much of that is just the initial setup and how much of that was just, I mean, is that, I don't even know that.
You know, I can tell you one thing. I know a lot of it had to do with the fact that Pearson was not ready. They were not ready, and they were, I mean, Neil was solving problems here before and telling them what to do at certain times during the testing. It was, so they were not ready. And that's, you know, that's what DESE is saying is that, you know, that they need to have better-trained technical staff. But there's lots of pros and cons. I, you know, had been all set to go with MCAS, but I want to hear what other superintendents have to say, and also, I'll be on Thursday, go to the MAS superintendent conference, and we'll hear some more there, but we really need to think long and hard about what the decision will be. If you recall, we have postponed a capital purchase till next year for more technology for parks, so I think if we can gather questions ahead of time, and we can have a good dialogue on June 11th on the topic.
Can I get your thoughts on, do you have any reservations at this time? And this might be a premature question, that this could be another situation like Race to the Top?
I have lots of reservations. I mean, Kate knows, I mean, if I were to make the decision today, I would say stay with MCAS. It's a known quantity, and because of the fact that I think, and it's interesting because, you know, you notice the statistics, the students who took the math had more technical difficulties with the test. Unfortunately, and that's why, in a way, I think it's unfair that we're having to make this decision without results. We're not getting any results, and that's hard. But in my mind, we've just invested a lot of energy, time, in the new educator evaluation, which is not going away, and we need data in order to do that, use that tool. And MCAS right now is the only data we have, so it's going to be a difficult decision for all of you, but I'll give my opinion.
Stop smiling.
Who's smiling? Two, three more meetings?
And also in your packet is a end-of-the-year financial report that is required by the, it's similar to an audit that we have to have done on the end-of-the-year report, which came out fine, so kudos to Paul Ruggiero.
That's the end of superintendent's report. Old business, the school calendar, 2014, 2015.
So this calendar now has all the CIT days, all the hot release days, all the conferences, and if you vote it this evening, we can get it online so parents can make their plans. I really hope that the committee will continue with the Friday CIT days. I have gotten lots of positive feedback from parents. It's easier for working parents to take off on a Friday afternoon than it is for a Wednesday, and it's also helpful for high school parents in the fall looking at colleges, they can, you know, go on a Friday afternoon and make a weekend out of it, so.
Anyone have any questions on the calendar? Entertainer motion to accept the calendar for 2014, 2015, to approve the detailed school year calendar as presented. Mr. Mullis?
I make a motion to approve the 2014, 2015 detailed school year calendar as presented.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Mrs. Broussard? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Okay. New business, oh, the financial report was under another one.
So now, this is, this is the FY '14 current financial report. As you can see from Mr. Ruggiero's memo, we are looking at closing out the year with a surplus of about $98,000.
Excellent.
Which is very good.
Very good.
If anyone had any questions about this that you see now and you didn't get answered, you could send a note to Mr. Ruggiero, but probably we have to wait till Monday to get it answered. These things are happening this week.
I just have one question. Joanne, is there any, is that the same as last year? Are we up or down than last year? Do you know that?
Last year, we had a little bit more in reserve. This is a much tighter budget this year. Expenses were up.
Were up, yeah. Okay, thank you.
As long as we're in the black, I'm happy.
I know, right? Yeah.
We're in the black, and the other thing, I was just wondering, when these changes all are coming about, I don't know what I'm wondering. Take it back, it just went out of my mind.
I just want to say, with some of the items that are historically over-budget, it's, I have to say, I'm very pleased to see them brought way down in, at a balance that is more reasonably expected, I guess, for lack of a better...
I will talk. Thank you.
Please do, thank you.
You know, the hardest ones are substitutes, that's the worst one to predict, and also home tutoring. You never know what that's going to be.
Right. That's the question I was going to ask you, the substitutes, do we, are we on level with them? Do we need to rethink those, do you think?
For your next year's budget, we did an increase in that line item in order to fund them, but you may want to consider, down the road, looking at hiring a couple of permanent substitutes, because it's actually, in a way, is more economical, that would be the ones called to fill in first, and...
We had that for years at Medford High School.
Yeah, we used to have it at Lexington. It was really successful.
Why is it more recommended?
Because you have, we have a commitment from that person, like for all our subs, bad weather days, Fridays and Mondays in the spring, we can't get people. That way, you have people committed.
And it works out for them some, we actually had a couple of retirees who did it. And it worked out for them because they were able to get a little extra money, and they were so happy to be in the school atmosphere. They really, it worked very well. But so, that's good. We'll have to, we'll keep that in mind. Okay. Oh, and now, vote on the WTA contract, 2014 to 2007.
Okay, got it.
What did I put in? Oh, am I out of old business?
We don't have that because we didn't...
We're working on it. We forgot the new superintendent contract.
Okay, sorry about that.
Don't forget that one.
Do you forget that one? My fault, okay, sorry.
I am very pleased to announce that we have reached a contract agreement with Mary Delai. I have a signature, my signature is on here, so I am going to pass this like a hot potato to get everybody else's signatures also. And she did have a pre-planned vacation, so her first official day in the office will be July 7. But we were all in agreement with that. Sign it along.
Thank you, Joanne.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you. And really, Kathleen and I are very grateful, are we not?
We're very grateful, yes, for all your time.
You all did such a good job, really. And the time that it took and the time you people had to take from your work and around your families and everything, I just, I'm sure people realize it and are totally grateful for the commitment.
Do I sign it?
I don't sign this, I can't sign it.
It says our names. No, I think you, you had in the past.
Oh, okay. I will. Thank you. Okay, and our next item of business is another contract, vote on the WTA contract. And Mrs. Burns and Mr. Mullis, we are very grateful to you. You did a fabulous job on this one, too. And Mrs. Carroll, I'd like to say a couple words.
So we have voted enormously for the WTA contract for 2014 and 2017. I would just like to congratulate both of you and the team itself for working on this. We appreciate it, all the hard work. And that's it, right?
And so it's, it's been ratified by the...
It's been ratified and enormously, and both sides and everybody.
All right. Goodness.
Sorry, I dropped ahead and did that wrong mistake.
Oh, that's okay. So we're done with that? All right, now, this is, we are down to our other reports first. No, any other reports?
Would that be me?
Yeah.
That would be me. Okay, so the web board is sponsoring the Red Sox trophy viewing on Friday, May 23, at the middle school, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. It is free. Great way to start the Memorial Day weekend. And we are raffling off Red Sox tickets.
Where is that?
So it's at the middle school.
Auditorium.
Auditorium. On that Friday before Memorial Day weekend.
From 3:00 to 5:00?
Yep, 3:30 to 5:00. Red Sox tickets.
Get in line at 3:00 o'clock.
Yep. Well, I mean, we're hoping for a good viewing, not overly crowded, that we want everybody to see it. But, you know, we're hoping for a good response.
That's cool. I can't imagine. I think that'd be great. Excellent. Anything, no other? Nope, tonight, okay. Correspondence? All right. Okay, the future meeting days and agenda items. On May 28, is this the meeting that we want to invite Mr. Delai?
No, we're going to, that's somewhere honoring the retirees. On June 11, we're going to have Andy Wa present on school discipline, and we're going to invite Ms. Delai for the PAC discussion.
Okay. So on May 28, we're going to be honoring the retirees?
Yes, and there's a long list.
I know, something like 24 or something?
24. And then we have a June 28 meeting.
Okay.
Really? Do we usually have that one? No, yeah, we...
We don't, but I think we should have that meeting.
If we need to.
Even if it's short, we definitely would like to have that meeting, for sure. Okay, and I guess there's it. Anything else? All right, yes.
I just have a question. We have scholarship night, and there's also an underclass scholarship. I only know about one of them. What's the underclass?
The underclass invitation you should have received, and that is what, June?
June 21st.
June 21st at 6:30.
May 21st.
Excuse me, May 21st.
At 6:30?
At 6:30. At the middle school cafeteria. Cafeteria. And then the senior, the scholarship night is May 29.
And that's also at...
May 29, that's strings vertical.
Oh, wait.
No, 30th.
I'm sorry, May 30th, sorry. And that's also at the middle school cafeteria.
What time is that one? Six thirty.
Six thirty, right?
So that was, okay.
We have a busy week.
We have a busy week. We have to make sure that we, I'll try and, I'll get them all listed for us for the next couple of weeks and get them out. We can do that, okay?
Because this connects, yeah, I'll get, yeah.
Yeah, this connects some things. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Brusad?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Mrs., oh, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Linda.